The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Good evening, everybody. This is the Select Board meeting of January 12th, 2021. First of all, welcome back, everybody. It's been a little bit of a while. We've been on hiatus. And Happy New Year to everyone as we start 2021. Just a few reminders for our audience. The meeting is being recorded and all comments and questions from the audience become part of the public record. If you have a question or would like to speak, the easiest way to do that is to notify us in the question box that appears on the control panel. I know that there is a hand-raising function next to your name, but we sometimes miss that, although not intentionally. So, as I said, the best way to make sure you get our attention is just to write something, send something to us in the question box, either that you have a question or that you have a comment to make. And with that, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Scott.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag. To the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, tonight, if we plan to open forum, we are paying tribute and honoring the service of two longtime town employees. Between the two of them, they have 91 years of service to the town of Westford, and I think that's pretty incredible. First, Chief Tom McIneney. Chief McIneney and his family are longtime residents of Westford. Currently living under his roof are four generations of McIneney's: chief and his wife Lorraine, his mother-in-law, who probably technically isn't a McIneney, three of his four children, and three of his four grandchildren, who are the apples of his eye. Chief McIneney has spent his entire career as part of the Westford Police Department. He began in 1985 as a 20-year-old auxiliary police officer, primarily responsible for traffic safety and dispatch. Less than a year later, he became an interim police officer, and in 1987, the chief became a full-time police officer. In 1989, he moved into the Criminal Investigation Division as an inspector, which is what we now call detective. Two years later, the chief was promoted to the rank of Detective Sergeant, supervising and overseeing all criminal investigations. And six years after that, he became the first Detective Lieutenant in our department. He was responsible for supervising court prosecutions and criminal investigations. And then a year later, the chief was promoted to Captain, becoming the second-in-command of the department. Two years later, and I think we're at about 2,000, the chief became the town's first Deputy Chief. As our Deputy Chief, he led the town through the state accreditation process. And at that time, the town of Westford and its police department became the 17th department in the state to attain accreditation, a status that it has continually maintained since then. In 2008, Tom was promoted to the Chief of Police, becoming the fourth chief in the town's department's history. But meanwhile, while rising through the ranks of our police department and raising his family here in Westford, he somehow found time to pursue his education. He received a Bachelor's of Science degree in Human Services and Criminal Justice from Springfield College and his Master's in Criminal Justice from Anna Maria College. He is also the first person in the town's history to graduate from the FBI's National Academy. He was a member of the 198th session, and this is a program where only 1% of law enforcement are invited to attend. Tom is also a graduate of Harvard University's Kennedy School of State and Local Government and the New York Police Department Internal Affairs Academy. Over the years, Tom has also received numerous awards and has been recognized for his excellence in criminal investigation and law enforcement. As this recitation reveals, no one can doubt the commitment and dedication that Chief McIneney has had, both for his job and to the town of Westford. For the past 35 years, Chief McIneney has dedicated himself to the well-being and the safety of our residents and to keeping our town safe. He has served with passion, with compassion, and with tenacity. He has been a forceful advocate for his department, even when he faces pushback from the Select Board and a lack of acceptance. Tonight, it is with deep appreciation that we say a heartfelt thank you to you, Chief McIneney, for all of your service to the town. And I would be remiss if I did not also thank Lorraine, who has shared you with the town for 35 years. We wish you and Lorraine well in this next phase of your lives, and we fully expect that you will not simply fade away, but that you will find new ways to be of service to the town. Now, I know that other folks have some things that they would like to share and say to you, Chief, so I'm going to start with the Select Board and ask members if they'd like to share anything. And then I know there are a few other people who also want to share their thoughts with you. So, somebody want to start?
I think you said Tom, Andrea. So, in addition to all of that, and so much gratitude for all the time serving our community, I've been lucky enough with Scott to work with Chief on a number of projects: First-Responder Study, Town School and Safety Task Force, a lot of projects that required a lot of hard work, a lot of deep diving, and working with all kinds of community members and all kinds of entities within the schools in town. And Tom and all of his team have always been terrific to work with, engaged in all those things. So, just my personal thanks, Tom, for being such a good partner as we've worked on many, many ways that we're trying to bring Westford forward. Thanks.
Now, Scott.
Right, so when I first thought about this job, I asked if I could spend some time with you and learn, and you spent hour, hour and a half. It was a long time. And I was really impressed at not just how the police department works, but the thought behind our drastic violence prevention unit, our cannon unit, all the thought that you've done and your department's done to, behind the scenes, make the town safer and have it a better place to be, a good visible presence, but it's also a friendly light on the ground. And also, just I think you said, but doors wide is open, and it has been, as Tom mentioned, with staffing, with Town School, City Task Force, and with the dispatch center. You were certainly a driving force behind that, and I trust in your back pocket is still the IOU, if you have training room. So, give that to Mark as your interim replacement, so he can catch it in some day. Thanks for all of your work for the town and your cooperation with the sometimes restive Board of Selectmen.
Mark?
Yeah, so I'll be brief. There's really two things, Tom, that I always define as the quality of an individual. The first is related to the kind of team that that individual leaves behind, says a lot about the individual themselves. And there is no doubt that the quality of the team that you have built over the time that you've been there, from the youngest member of your team to the most senior. And that's a testament to you and the things that you hold important as you're doing your hiring and promoting. The second thing is related to teamwork. So, over the 12 years that I've been able to work with you, whether it be on Capitol Committee or a bunch of other different committees, while you are selfish, as you should be, in representing what your department's needs are, at the end of the day, you always play for the entire team of Westford and make whatever sacrifices and flexibility requirements are asked. Those two sets of qualities, Tom, are the two most important to me, and you have represented them extremely well. I wish you all the best. Thank you so much for what you do and what you put yourself and your family through during all those years. And I think, as I said to you in an email, someday I hope to be able to actually see you again, other than just this. So, congratulations and thank you.
Okay.
With that... Yeah, could I just... Yeah, I mean, I was gonna say something that, I'll just kind of add on to what Mark was saying, because it was kind of what I was gonna say. And I mean, for the five or six months that we've been working together, I wish I could have said years. You know, I think I vividly remember you were coming straight from vacation, and then you kind of jumped into a police forum discussion, which was a tough forum. It was a tough discussion, but as Mark said, it really came back to community and that you were there for it, and you weren't shy, you weren't scared. And so, I really appreciate that. I really value that leadership that you put forward, and I just wanted to say thank you for your service. Again, it's only been a few months, but I really appreciate your patience with me and just being able to be open and to talk with me. So, thank you so much.
All right, Jody, I know, oh, we're not done yet, Tom. You gotta wait your turn. Jody?
Yes, so, Tom, in 2008, you were promoted to Police Chief, and later that year, I was appointed Town Manager. So, together, we embarked on new positions in Westford and developing a positive working relationship together. And there were challenges. Many policies and procedures needed to be addressed and improved, and you were always a partner in that. You were cooperative, and we established a work relationship based upon trust, mutual respect, open communication, a sense of humor when needed. And throughout our 12-plus years working together, you have kept me notified of any critical occurrence, you know, sometimes within minutes of it occurring. And I'm so appreciative of that, as are the Select Board members. Your communication has been outstanding, and I'd like to think that we each learned things from each other. You have an incredible amount of knowledge about law enforcement, and you are passionate about your job and devoted to police work. At times, we would both become fervent in our opinions, and we actually enacted a rule that would help us keep discussions in order when they became intense. We would let each other speak for a suitable amount of time, and then we would display what sign, Tom, which was our sign to tell the other it was time to let the other speak. And honestly, it worked very well. We were very respectful of each other, and it allowed us to speak without interruption. So, it really worked very well for us, I think. You can try that with Lorraine. I don't know if it'll work or not.
Yes, but Mark, you might want to try it with Jody.
Been married so long, I'm not gonna give you advice. But if Tom and I ever really disagreed, which we did a handful of times through the years, we let the topic cool off a little bit, gave us time to reflect, and then we would come back together to resume working together in a positive, effective manner. Would you agree with that, Tom?
I would agree, and maybe others could learn from that, huh, Jody?
Yeah. So, Tom can be tenacious when it comes to fighting crime in our town. Many times, when there were dangerous situations occurring, Tom was at the scene, in the woods, with his staff, chasing down or arresting bad guys, or showing up at scenes of violence or other lawless occurrences. In one of the scariest times, I remember a motorist who was trying to escape attempted to run Tom over with his car. I repeatedly told Tom to stop running through the woods and jumping over trees, as he did when he was a newly-appointed police officer, but he didn't listen, and he loved being part of the action, as of even last week. Tom could always be counted on to be prepared for any occurrence, and he was always behind the scenes, making sure we were ready to respond if needed. Tom loves Westford. As Andrea said, he's lived here his entire life, and he is committed to our town, not only as far as policing goes, but every facet of Westford. He's a devoted family man, always taking the time to tell me about his kids and his grandkids, his mother-in-law who lives with them. He has only said loving, appreciative marks about her to me and all his family members. I'm incredibly proud of Tom. With his wife, Lorraine, they have built a beautiful family and a remarkable life in Westford. In closing, Tom, thank you for so many years of service to our town. You've assisted with creating an excellent police department filled with many officers who are poised to move forward to meet the many challenges ahead. Enjoy your well-deserved retirement, Tom, and you will be missed.
Thank you very much.
Um, Joe, Chief Targ, I know you're out there, and I know that you wanted to say a few words.
I am. Am I muted or not?
You are unmuted, yes.
Perfect. Okay, no, I just want to say Tom and I came on the job about the same time. In the 1980s, we both moved up through the ranks in our respective departments, and through the years, we always worked great together. You know, when issues came up, we were always able to sit down and talk and work our way through them and learn by our mistakes. And doing so, we made both departments so much better. We never needed a reason to stop by each other's office just to visit, pour coffee, or take a breeze for a little bit. I just want to say I'm really, truly gonna miss him, and I wish him the best of luck in his retirement.
Okay. I would just like to comment that, you know, Chief Targ and Jody, you both, you know, you all started in Chief McIneney at the same time. And Jody and Chief Targ, just because Chief McIneney is retiring now, do not feel like you have to follow along, okay?
No, that's fine.
Captain Neil, I know is out there. He was having some camera problems. I don't know if we've got those fixed or not. Ah, we do, okay.
I got them fixed. I'm just waiting my turn.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. So, I echo all the sentiments you all have stated. Chief, it's been a pleasure working with you and serving under your command, going through the ranks myself, and you served as my direct supervisor more than once. I can say this: you remain consistent on how you made your decisions, and when the tough decisions were asked of you, you always put the town and the department first. The safety of all in the town was paramount. That includes both citizens and the department personnel. You always handle yourself with dignity, and I know you have the respect of all those in the department. Chief, congratulations on your retirement. I know it will be difficult for you at first, because you put your heart and soul into being the chief. Thank you for your service, and I wish you the best for you and your family, and Lorraine deserves this just as much as you do, Chief.
Thanks, Vic. I appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Yes, Chief McIneney, actually, no, first Deputy Chief Chambers, and then they'll get to you, Chief McIneney.
We've had this in you talk before, Tom. Give us a minute. Let us appreciate you. But I just wanted to comment, and I think it's excellent that you have an opportunity to hear all this feedback, Chief, as you're getting ready to embark upon your next journey. After 35 years of serving this community in the capacity that you have, it's amazing that you've made it with any hair at all, even though it's white. So, I don't think people understand that you've been on call for this police department, for this town, for probably 34 of your 35 years of service. You've put your nights, weekends, holidays, you know, I know for a fact you've left holiday dinners, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, Thanksgiving, to answer the call for service. So, for that, we appreciate that. But one other thing that Andrea had touched on earlier, and when she read her note, was you were the driving force behind this police department for the past 25 years. Most of the advances that we've been able to make have been because of your drive and your professionalism and your desire to make sure that the Westford Police Department represents the profession so well and provides the level of safety and security that we do to this town. Your love for this community has come through in everything that you've done for this place, and I think it's, I'm happy for you that it's your time. It's time for you to put the belt down for a while and enjoy your very well-earned retirement. So, on behalf of the other members of the Westford PD, and I know we'll have a chance to have many conversations over the next week and a half before you walk out the door, but on behalf of the other members of the WPD, we're gonna be forever grateful for your dedication, your professionalism, and especially your friendship. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mark. And I just want to say thank you to everybody. Those are very kind words. I want to say thanks to the Select Board, the Town Manager, and of course, the residents who've supported our department through the years. I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank the men and women of the department, both past and present, because over the years, this is the reason why we have a great department, is they're out there doing the work, and they do an amazing job, and I'm very, very thankful for their service. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank Chief Joe Cannell's family. Chief Cannell hired me back in 1985, and Chief Cannell passed away last year, May 1st of 2020. Took a chance on hiring a kid from NAB, and it's worked out pretty well for me and I think for the town. I'd also like to thank Bob Welch, Chief Welch, who promoted me through the ranks of Sergeant, Lieutenant, Captain, and Deputy Chief, and he helped me and put me in the position that I'm in right now as chief and to take over for him in 2008. And most of all, I'd really like to thank my entire family. And as you said, Andrea, it's pretty big, and my household is pretty big as well. My wife, Lorraine, who's been by my side since we were in high school. She still will continue to hold the unofficial rank of Lieutenant Colonel and call the shots. My children, who've stood by my side and value and respect those who serve in public service. I look forward to spending that time, like you said, Jody, with my grandkids. I love every second of that. To my brothers, my in-laws, my mother-in-law, who absolutely has my back all the time, and to the community. It's just been a great ride for me. I have been truly blessed, and it's been an honor to serve this community and the town that I love and grew up in. So, like I said, Jody, if we need anything, I'm always there to help out. I kept the same number, so it's gonna be different, but I really look forward to it. And thank you very much for taking the time and the kind words. And I will say this, I've always said it, we all work together as a team, Jody. When we have our department head meetings, police and fire, public safety, we work great together, complement each other, and I am confident that that's how this department will continue on. And, you know, special thanks to the men and women of the fire department as well. They do a great job, and we are very lucky to have the public safety services that we have in our community. So, again, thank you very much, everybody. I truly appreciate it.
Okay, I think, first of all, thank you. I think we have one last item, which is just a trip down memory lane for you, Chief.
Oh, man.
Oh, great.
Yep, there we go.
15 and 16.
Yes.
I remember that. My God, is that from the... From the 40s or 50s? What the hell?
Oh, my gosh.
Dark hair.
Yep.
Aren't those your parents, Tom?
Yes, that's my police graduation.
Got a great picture.
Thank you. And Joe Cannell?
Yeah.
Ah, your sons.
Twins.
That was a fun time. Myself and Dave Cannell, when we started working detectives, and we had a pretty big seizure. That was a group of Vic Neil, Dave Cannell, Walter Shay, doing a search warrant back in the day. Again, dark hair. Gun investigation that we had, an armed robbery. Myself and Louis Freeh, the Director of the FBI, when I went through the FBI Academy.
Yeah, nice legs, Tom.
Oh, I was gonna say that.
That's what I looked at, Mark. Thank you. This is a group of us at Vic's wedding.
Yeah, that's a great picture.
You went deep with these photos.
Thank you to Lorraine. Lorraine is, she deserves credit. There she is. I just saw her.
That's Brendan. Yeah, there's the crew. Man. Getting promoted to Deputy Chief, Bob Welch, and the family.
Yeah.
The two boys are police officers. Myself and Terry Kane. There's my boys, and Lorraine. There's a group right there that I came on with, and I served a lot of time with. Joe Walker in the group. Wow.
There's your mother-in-law.
She's not gonna be far behind, trust me. That's us at the lake, enjoying it up there. That's my happy-go-lucky shepherd. A last graduation for WA for my youngest.
Holy cow.
That's the wedding.
Wow.
There's my grandson, who's the boss. Thank you very much. That's very nice, and I appreciate it. I really do.
Thank you, Tom. All right. We actually have a second person who we need to honor and pay tribute to tonight as well. Chet Cook. Where is he? Why is he not on my screen yet?
Hard to find. It's hard to find good help.
It is.
We can hear you.
There you are.
There you go.
There you go. Okay. So, Chet Cook is somebody else who has served this town with zeal, commitment, and dedication over the course of 56 years. I think that qualifies you as an institution, Chet. For 56 years, Chet has been a fixture, well-known, well-recognized, and well-respected in our building department. He began his employment in 1965 as a gas inspector. During his 56 years, Chet has held that position, along with the positions of Building Inspector, interim Building Inspector, zoning enforcement... along with the positions of Building Inspector, Interim Building Inspector, Zoning Enforcement Officer, Tree Warden, Ombudsman for the Town, to the Town Manager's Office, and Conservation Agent. In addition, for 36 years, he found time to serve on the Conservation Commission. He also served on the Town Manager's Search Committee and the Industrial Development Commission, which is the predecessor to today's Economic Development Committee. He is also, as we all know, married to Nancy Cook. No easy task, I am sure. They have been married for 42 years. They have five children and 11 grandchildren who adore their grandpa. Anyone who has ever come in contact with Chet has always been met with a smile and with a twinkle of his eye. He was always ready to assist and help, whether it be a resident, town boards or commissions, or a wayward developer. He is consummate in being able to resolve differences between warm neighbors and a former assistant town manager and interim town manager would refer to his skills on the par and equivalent to Henry Kissinger. Chet was and is always ready to go above and beyond the call of duty. He is a fountain of knowledge when it comes to buildings and safety and his expertise and his experience will be sorely missed. His love for Westford knows no bounds and is simply beyond question or doubt. Chet, after 56 years, you've earned your retirement. Tend to that fabulous garden that I know you have. Take care of your chickens, which Rumah has you carry on conversations with. It is with gratitude and appreciation that we acknowledge all of your contributions to the town over these past 56 years. We, we will miss you, but we expect that we will continue to see you around town, perhaps riding one of those tractors you collect. We wish you the very best in your retirement. And I just lost my screen. So I don't know if there are, here we go. I don't know if there are other board members who would like to say something to Chet. Scott?
Yeah, so congratulations, Chet. I don't want to make you feel old, but I was three years old when you began working in town government, which I think is, I don't know, it's a this is quite a statement that most people in this town weren't even, on this broadcast even born when we began working for the town. So that's quite a legacy, that's quite a legacy.
I'm afraid from pointing that out, Scott, but I'm just going to say.
But, no, seriously, if you think about the Westford, 50 years ago, you've probably seen most every house in this town get built, that we've grown so much. At that time, we probably expected most of those houses, most of us probably lived in a safe building because of work that you did. It's a town that tries itself on its customer service, customer friendliness, and you've been you know, sort of the paragon of that kind of, of a model, you know, for our town staff in terms of of keeping up our citizens happy and safe. So I've got a long list of things to do from Nancy in retirement. I know that those are not on that list, I've been told. But I wish you all the success with your garden, your chickens, and your tractor, or tractors. My, I ran for that one Model B, you have to run for another week, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Mark?
Yeah, so Chet, you and I don't know each other extremely well, but what I said to Tom, there's actually a third characteristic of somebody who has kind of the character of somebody that we should all emulate, and that's how people talk about you. So in the 12 years that I have done a variety of volunteer things in town, there isn't literally a week that goes by where your name doesn't come up. And not in a negative way, and always in a positive way. And that is, that is really a sign of high character and high impact. And so I congratulate you on that. I congratulate you on your retirement. I wish you all the best and thank you so much for everything you've done and will probably continue to do for the town.
Chet, I'm with Mark and I'm not fortunate enough to have worked with you directly during my time in service here, but the fact that you've had such an amazing contribution over such a long period of time is a huge credit to this town and a huge credit to you. And I have to feel like part of what makes Westford special is that there are people who find joy and challenge and excitement in, in serving this town over, over really a long and wonderful period of time. So congratulations and very best in your retirement.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Anita?
Yeah, I mean, we don't know each other at all.
My wife tells me you love you all the time.
I mean, and just kind of as what Mark was saying, I keep referencing Mark, but your name does come up a lot and I know you're really the part of the fabric of the town. When I, when I was like joining all the different things that I was joining and being part of everything, thinking about the volunteerism, as Tom was saying, like you were truly part of that. You are like the, the fabric and the volunteerism that like we, we look to. Like you embody that. And so I know that it wasn't just volunteerism, but just towns, being a town staff member too. I just wanted to say thank you for your service. At first, when I heard it was 56 years, I thought that was a typo. And so that's incredibly impressive. Talk about commitment, that's amazing. Thank you so much for your, your service and, and thank you.
Jody, I know you have some words to say.
Yes, so Chet, over the past 12 years, I've really enjoyed working with you. I have been astonished by your knowledge of our town. You seem to know every address, every business, every occurrence at every business, every business owner. You know, you know a lot. And you have always amazed me with your calm, collected manner when you go about your day's business. We've had so many big projects along the way and since my time here with Cornerstone Square and Bernie Ba Honda, numerous housing developments, Summer Village, Princeton Properties, Villages at Stone Ridge, Lakeside, Graniteville Woods, I mean, just to name a few. You've been involved in all those projects and so many more. One thing that you didn't really enjoy about the job was sign patrol. I've been here and through the years, I would call you to report some illegal signs and locations that they didn't belong. Generally, Andrea had let me know, but, and actually Ellen Hardy a few times, but you were always, you know, very gracious and a bit uncomfortable because you felt badly that these were mostly businesses trying to struggle along and get the word out. But you, you did successfully remove those signs as directed. So you have a very big heart. You are a wonderfully warm person. You're smart, you're knowledgeable, and you have so much experience for the past 56 years, and the town has really benefited from that. You've been through several town managers that you've told me about and you've seen several land use management directors too. You've been through quite a few building commissioners and select boards. But through it all, you have always been respectful, positive, and eager to please. Whether you're driving around town in your red pickup truck with our little town logo stuck on the side or that little black Mercedes that Nancy gave you a couple of years ago. One thing's for certain, you will be smiling, you will be helpful, you will know the answer, and you are ready to be there and assist in any way you can. So Chet, thank you for your 56, yes, 56 years of service to the town. And I'm pretty sure that is a town record. You are incredible and you know what? I don't think you're done serving yet. So you'll be back.
All right. Yes. Jeff?
Thank you, Andrea. Although I've only known Chet for about seven and a half years, I still know a thing or two about him from his earlier days while working for the town. I know that Chet had the uncanny ability, as you mentioned, Andrea, to address complaints and to resolve conflict. And unfortunately for him, he was so good at it that he was asked time and again to fix the most hostile and challenging of complaint issues. And the uglier the problem, the angrier the people, the more likely you would hear the words, "Just send Chet." And on many occasions, it would go something like this. Chet would calmly go out to the site and approach the property or business owner regarding the complaint. The owner would then scream at Chet with much profanity for about 30 minutes or so.
Happened.
And then after that first half hour, Chet would start again to explain what the problem was, the issues, and how they might go about addressing it. After about another 30 minutes, an agreement would be reached and there would be a conflict finally resolved. After about another 30 minutes, yes, they were still talking, Chet would then be invited to have coffee or a slice of pie.
That's crazy.
They didn't really keep detailed time sheets back in those days. So I think one of the reasons that Chet was so successful at what he did is because he treated everyone as a neighbor first. And I know there's much kidding around in town, but to Chet, it didn't matter if you were from the center, Graniteville, Forge Village, Nettamassett, or Parker Village. Chet treated everyone like they lived right next door or just across the street. And I think we can all learn something from Chet's approach. And Chet, just on behalf of the Land Use Management Department and myself personally, I want you to know that we really appreciate you and all that you have done for the department and for the town. And while I will certainly miss you in the office, I do look forward to, what else, but meeting you to share coffee and hear more of your great, great stories. So Chet, thank you very much and please enjoy your retirement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Chip, as you can imagine, we have a little pictorial show for you too.
Oh my God. Did Nancy have something to do with it?
I plead the fifth.
I can only imagine. Oh my God. Oh my God, that was the Apple Watch that my father had. Western was all Apple Watches in those days.
Yep. Is that the cup of coffee you're having?
No, and my father? Oh my God.
I want to know what this is.
I was an emcee for a dance recital and that's my daughter Lori getting a citation. So I was the emcee for the show. That was my first time on stage. Oh, oh my God, is that all? I've got the day out of school for that. I think that's my younger brother.
That looks like, like you were like a, like a movie thing.
Yeah, really. Kind of a James Dean thing going there.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, we were changing stoves, refrigerators. Oh my God. We actually, can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Oh yeah.
We actually did inspections that day like that. It was, of course, Halloween. And Ellen Hardy on Main Street had a lot of renovations going on at the time. So Don Kenny, my partner, we went over there to do the inspections in the morning. You can just imagine how the contractors looked at us when we came in. And we acted so serious that they didn't know how to take us, but it was one fun day.
I got to tell you, Chet, I loved this picture. You're kind of hidden behind Dennis Kane Senior there, but I love Patty in the second row and Lori and Nancy in the front and Bill Turner in the back and Jeff Shelgren and just lots of, lots of old, or not old, lots of people that have worked here still do and have moved along. So I love this picture.
A great group of people. I don't think you're supposed to put that one in with the town symbol, am I sure?
Banana split, Chet.
Yeah, I don't think the Capitol Committee approved that car. Go back.
No, 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 no. I actually gave that car up and get these to quit. Every place I used to go, I used to quit in the parking lot, in driveways. I actually gave that car up.
Yeah, it's a good picture.
That's how we'll remember.
I haven't gone yet.
That's one we'll remember. Chet, thank you so much. As, as Jody said, you have outlasted, you know, many town managers, town planners, select boards, planning boards, conservation commissions, and, and throughout them all, you served with, with dignity, with integrity, with always a willingness to help out. And we thank you for all of your years of service. And as Jody said, I fully expected to see you doing something for the town in your retirement. So thank you so much.
I, I would just like to think that I got an awful lot out of this. There was a learning curve. Other people I met, I met people all over the state through doing this job. It's been a wealth of information for me and I've enjoyed almost every bit of it. The signs are a little tough at times. But really, I've enjoyed this so much. I feel so lucky that I've had the ability to do this for the town for so many years. I've really enjoyed what I was doing. And we've spoken about the town managers that I had and the building inspectors and so on, but I want you to know that you had two of the best administrators in Jody Ross and Jeff Morris. They have been the greatest since I met them. Always have the door open. If you have a problem, they'll talk to you about it. They've been great to work for and I will miss them a great deal. Thank you very much.
I'm not going in there, Chet, so you know where to find me, okay?
I do.
And I'm seeing you for coffee.
That's a deal, Jeff. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I certainly recognize to all of our audience members that we are well behind schedule, but tonight's, what? But recognizing, recognizing these two gentlemen who have given so much to our town was really very important for the board to do and for our community to acknowledge. So with that, we will move on to our agenda and our first, our 7:05 PM item is a public hearing to request approval of a all alcohol restaurant license for Ocho Cafe of Westford doing business as Ocho Cafe and tacos, Ocho Cafe Tacos and Tequila. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second. Second.
And, and because we're virtual, remember, we have to do roll calls. So Scott?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. And can I also have a motion to waive reading of the public hearing notice?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
A second? All those in favor? Scott?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Patty, I do believe you're out there. Yes, you are. I see you on my list. Is everything in order?
Yes, everything is in order. I'm still recovering from, from the open forum. Okay.
All right. Any, any comments or questions from the board? Tom?
Just a brief gratitude for a new business coming into town during this difficult time. So thank you so much for investing in Westford and being here. Thank you.
Mark?
Yeah, I agree completely. And secondly, just curious-
And secondly, just curious as to if there's an opening date, given everything that's going on.
It looks like the manager is online. Can we unmute him, Eric, and see if he can answer that question?
He's currently self-muted.
So.
I think they're already open.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Yeah, I don't think so. Um.
Not soon enough.
Anyway.
Oh, no, sorry. I was mixing up my hearings.
We'll find out, and we'll get back about that, okay?
That's fine. The motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor, Scott?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Anita?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Hi. Now I need a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
And a second? All those in favor, Scott?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Anita?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, our next item is a public hearing. It's a request again to approve an all-alcohol restaurant license for Diggy's LLC, doing business as Diggy's Pizza. And is there a motion to open the public hearing and waive reading the public hearing notice?
So moved.
Okay, all those in favor, Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. And again, Patty, is everything in order?
Everything is in order. And I know that the Spaldings have been wanting to open the restaurant, which they have done. I've heard good things about it, and they have wanted this alcohol license since they were able to get it. And we will move along and go the next step if you approve.
Awesome.
Okay. Any questions from the board or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. And is there a motion to close the public? Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor, Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, we are at our 7:15 PM item, and we have a request for a change of manager on an all-alcohol in holder license for the Empire Regency Hospitality LLC, doing business as the Regency Inn and Conference Center.
Motion to open the public hearing?
Actually. Okay, yeah, this is, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Hi. And I need a motion to waive reading of the public hearing notice?
So moved. Hi, second.
You got a second first. Then you do the last. Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Hi. Patty, are we good with this?
You are. Good to go.
Motion to approve.
Okay, all those in favor, Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion to close the public.
Yes, thank you.
Second.
All those in favor, Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Hi. And now our last public hearing, at least for tonight, is a request to approve an all-alcohol restaurant license for 355 Littleton Road LLC, doing business as Westfords. Is there a motion to open the public hearing and waive reading of the public hearing notice?
So moved.
Second.
And a second? All those in favor, Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. Patty?
Yes.
Are we good?
Yes, this is a license that had been held by the former Tiki Lau, and then it's gone through a couple of different things. And they actually were late in signing their renewal, so they are trying to get it back, and we're following through. I'm not sure if Paul Alton is the attorney, if he is out there, if he has anything he needs to say about it, but I think everything is in order, so, and there is Paul, see?
Ah.
So 355, yeah, 355 Littleton Road LLC had this license previously. And the tenant that they had since rented the space to was obligated to give the license back to them if they left the premises. And they left the premises before the pandemic. And we were trying to find a new tenant. In the meantime, tough to do right now, so we're applying for the license back again. If the situation allows, if regulations allow, the economy allows, we'll open up as soon as we can. And it's also possible we may find a new restaurateur that wants to come in. And if they're a good tenant, we may bring them back for another hearing. But that's the short story.
Okay, Mark?
Yeah, so just a question on this then. So there's really no one who's going to be using this at this time, right? Because there's no.
No, that's not necessarily. We ran the restaurant there before. We ran the new Tiki Lau, and we might run it again. Right now isn't a great time to open up a restaurant. But if the market and the regulations make it practical to open, we will open. But also, if somebody comes and they want to be a serious tenant and rent the space, we're available to rent it out to somebody to run it as well. So either way, the goal is to reopen as soon as it's practicable.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Well, wait, Jody has something to say.
Yeah, so I guess I'm a little confused, Paul, because I was told this was a restaurant named Westfords that was opening. But it sounds.
Yeah, but today isn't a good day to open a restaurant with the regulations in place. This client operated the new Tiki, and it is capable with Mark Wexler as an experienced manager. It is capable of opening, and we'd like to open. We hate to keep the space vacant and unused. And so the goal is to open a restaurant there as soon as it's practicable. That is the goal. But we're also saying that if we end up with some tenant that wants to come in that has a great idea and it would be a great tenant and a great restaurant, we would probably have looked for a transfer of the license. But we don't want to keep this space empty and unused.
So I would just recommend maybe the board not take action on this tonight because this is not what I understood, Paul. And I'm a little concerned because that is basically the board approving a liquor license for you, but with no, there's no real plan to open a restaurant right now. So I just, I think I need to do a little more research into this. That's my recommendation. The board can do whatever they want, but I was told this was a.
That's not what I said. I didn't say we don't intend to open the restaurant. We're not intending to open a restaurant right this minute because of the regulations pertaining to the pandemic. When the regulations become more practicable for a restaurant to open, then we will open the restaurant. The only exception will be if we end up with another restaurateur that's better suited to operate than we are, and we would consider them as a tenant. But we have run the restaurant there before. We'll do it again.
But can I just say?
Jody, wait a minute. Mark?
Yeah, so I guess just following up on all of that. What's the purpose of us approving this tonight if there isn't a restaurant that's going to use it right now? Why wouldn't you just come back when you're ready to reopen?
Apparently, apparently, I have not been clear. Let me try this again. We're going to open a restaurant today. What is it, July, January 12? In the middle of a pandemic, with the regulations regarding the number of people you can have a facility is not a good day to open a restaurant. But we still have to go through the state process. There's still at least another thirty days before we'd even have a license. We have an experienced manager in Mark Wexler, who's on the call today. He's run restaurants. He knows how to do it. He'll set it up. Is it going to open in thirty days? Maybe not in thirty days, but it could practically open in sixty days. We want, we don't want this space to go unused. It's too valuable a space. Our client constructed the space. They want to use the space. We're going to open as soon as is possible and practicable.
Anita, I know you had a question or comment.
Yeah, you know, I appreciate that your client has experience with opening restaurants. I guess what my question is, which I think several of us are kind of hung up on, is whether the space right now, today, is vacant.
Yes, it's vacant.
Okay. Paul, I have a question. Prior to this, I know that the space is vacant today. Was there a restaurant? I can't remember. Was there a restaurant in that space that was operating?
Yeah, they operated, but they did not operate successfully. And they walked away from the space earlier this year before the pandemic. And then I went to court and got a judgment against them. Their lease with our related entity required them to return the license to us. We can't find them. But the terms of, that's why there was no renewal. There's really nobody out there. They're, 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 they don't exist anymore. So their agreement with us, and I provided a copy of the pledge agreements with the license application, require that they return the license to us if they vacated or terminated the lease. And they've done, so they're in that position. We want to take the license back. The reason we didn't submit a renewal is because we did not hold the license at the end in October, November. We were still looking for another tenant to come in and take a space in, but the pandemic regulations got extended further, making it that much more difficult to find a tenant. So that's the short version of the story.
Okay, Jody?
Yeah, so what I wanted to say is, and again, this is completely up to the board, but I want to make sure they have all the facts. So Tiki Lau had a license, went out of business. Then the license, I believe, sat there unused for seven years. Then, I believe, was it Craft Beer Exchange open, Paul?
Yeah, it's a little bit different than that. The Tiki Lau closed while we were going through the permitting process to get the shopping center approved. The approval process took longer than desired. Then the construction process took longer than desired. And then we had to come up with a tenant. We came up with the Craft Beer Exchange. It took a long time for them to get set up and open. And then they did not last long at all. If you had been in there, you're one of the few, which is part of the problem. They just, they couldn't make it.
Yeah, go ahead.
What I was saying is, the Tiki Lau had a license, went out of business. They held it for seven years without opening a restaurant. Then they opened Craft Beer Exchange. They went out of business almost a year ago. Actually, I believe it was before the pandemic, they closed. We sent all the renewal, we sent all the renewal paperwork. The license was not renewed. Then the company asked us in January if they could renew. We did research with legal. No, you couldn't because you did not renew at the proper time. So all I want to tell the board is, this is the only all-alcohol restaurant license available in the town. And I just want to make sure you realize that. So I was told that Westfords was a restaurant ready to open when we accepted the application. So I just want to make sure all the facts are out there when the board decides what to do.
Mark?
Yeah, so I'm not sure we've ever granted a license to a restaurant that had, to a location that has no plan.
We have, actually.
Yeah, so, yeah, so tell me, because I don't recall.
We did it, and Paul, maybe you can help me out. But I remember that we did it at a town meeting for a potential development on Route 110. That actually never happened, okay? The development, it never happened.
Oh, is that the, is that the one that used to be the, the Very Fine?
Yes.
Yeah, you're right.
That's, that's right. And so we did grant a license for them. And it, as I said, that development never happened, and it was never built.
Jody's got a question.
I'm sorry, my screen is completely frozen right now.
Jody had a question.
We've actually done that, we've actually done that at least four times, I believe. But that's a different type of license. That is site-specific. It is granted by town meeting. It then goes to the state legislature, and it stays with the site. So we have granted one to Chris Yule at Millworks for a restaurant he went to town meeting for, Very Fine. And then there's two at the Marketplace, which is in the Whole Foods Plaza. But that is a different type of license. This is an all-alcohol, that can go anywhere in town, all-alcohol restaurant. So I just want to make sure you have all the facts.
We don't want this to go anywhere. You have to appreciate that we have, the same principal owns the property as the principal who owns the, that's applying for the license. The goal is not to let the license go anywhere. We built a restaurant-specific space at the shopping center. Would like to be able to use it. We will open the restaurant as soon as it's practicable. At the moment, with the regulations, it's not a good time to start a brand-new venture.
Mark?
Yeah, so just my last comment on this. So I can appreciate, you know, it is built out. I was one of the few that went there once.
Once was enough?
Yeah, once was enough. So I, you know, I would hate for them to not have access to it. I guess my only concern with it is we're naming it as Westfords. You know, we're like, we're granting it to a thing that doesn't even exist. So I don't know if this is the right method to do it. I would, I personally am okay with it staying with the property because, you know, that is, that's a pretty big space that somebody could hopefully go in and use and in an area that could use a full-service restaurant. But I don't know how it works with a name like Westfords, which really isn't a business, really. That's my only question.
The application requires, well, asks you to provide a DBA. We have the license, licensee, which is the applicant, which is a real LLC, 355 Littleton Road LLC. It's the same entity that held the license before the Craft Beer Exchange. The name can change. The name is just a DBA. It's not.
It's not illegal.
The name would likely change.
Yeah, okay.
Anita?
Yeah, I just, I just had a question, and I don't know if it's just because I don't have a lot of experience here, but in terms of timing, is there a reason why we need to consider approving this tonight versus later when you have a better sense of like a tenant? Or maybe when the restaurant climate is a little bit friendlier to opening?
Why is it important to be done now? Because we'd like to be able to open a restaurant as soon as possible. Would like not the restaurant, the license to disappear. We have that dedicated space for a restaurant, like to be able to use it as a restaurant. The regulatory process requires that you. The regulatory process requires that you act upon an application within 30 days. We applied as quickly as possible because the since the renewal was not sent to our client, the renewal was apparently sent to CBE. And we didn't have an opportunity to renew because the license was not actually in our name. We're trying to preserve the license so that we can keep it at that dedicated space. If there's a possibility to agree to extend the hearing for another, whatever you need, if you need another 30 or 60 days for purposes of extending the hearing, I'm fine with that. I just don't want this to go into the abyss.
Okay, Tom?
I appreciate all the background, and I don't have a problem with going ahead and voting to grant this, given the long investment at this site and understanding that it's the same, essentially the same entity that's developed and owns the property there. So I understand the logic and so my position would be I feel comfortable supporting it.
I too am comfortable supporting this at this at this time. And I think, Paul, you also said earlier that you you have to go through the state, and that's probably a 30 day process, at least.
It is, at least. Statutorily, they have 30 days. They take 30 days. God bless them.
Okay, Anita, and then we're gonna vote, guys.
Okay, I just have a question if we have a sense, and maybe we don't, if whether or not there are any other restaurants that are planning to open. I don't know if we would know that.
Jody?
I don't, I do not know that. And I think, again, whatever you all decide to do, I just don't know if this honestly can legally happen, because I am not aware that you can secure a license without a business ready to go. So I, but if you want to vote it, and we will find out, that's fine. I just think we were, we were kind of under the impression there was a restaurant ready to go there. So anyway, I don't know. But this is the last one we have, so.
Okay, all right. Any further comments or questions? Scott?
I guess to me, the risk is even if we had another restaurant ready to go, you would then take the license here and put it there, and you can this sort of build us a lab without an anchor. I think we kind of, you know, as a as a town, looking at our business base and tax base, almost have to keep that that license intact with the property to make this this thing get tenants.
Good point. All right. With that, is there a motion to approve the license?
So moved.
There's a second? Okay, all those in favor? Tom?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. And now it's there a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Tom?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. All right. Good luck to
Thank you. I always enjoy our engagements, but even if it's remotely, it's nice to, it's nice to see you all.
Good to see you. Good luck to you and your client. Hopefully, he'll be able to represent to open a restaurant. All right, um, we are now at our 7:25 PM item. However, I am going to exercise chair discretion, and I know that out there is our Eagle Scout or potential Eagle Scout, Carter Purple, who wants to present his project to us, and I'm mindful that he is a high school student. And so I think let's take him out of order so that we can hear his project and also not make him wait until later hours of the evening. So Carter, I see you. You're up. So please go ahead and present your project to the board.
All right. Hello, everybody. My name is Carter Purple. I'm a senior at Westford Academy, and more importantly, I'm a prospective Eagle Scout from Troop 159 here in town. I'm here to tell, I'm here tonight to tell you about my proposed project. I'm somebody who's very passionate about history. It's what I want to study in college, and so I knew I wanted to do my project based around that. And I ended up coming up with the idea to install five historical markers slash signs at different sites around Westford. As I'm sure you all know, our town is very rich in history, and it's almost impossible to pick five sites, but I came up with a list of five. Mr. Heidemann, would you mind going to the next slide? Okay, so I have a map here of the five sites. I've been working in conjunction with Mrs. Green with the Historical Society. I've also spoken to a couple of people such as Mrs. Hardy, Mr. Barrett off at the Highway Department, and Mr. Christiana for help with the sign. So I've been talking to a lot of people. My five locations are the Westford Museum and the original Westford Academy Foundation. Those were at the suggestion of Mrs. Green at the Historical Society. The other three were ones that I picked myself because I thought they were unique locations that each Westford citizen could learn a lot more about. Number three is the McDougall, the former McDougall Rope Toe on Blakesville. Number four is the former Poor Farm, the Town Farm Road Building that the Westford Rec Department, I believe, is in now. And number five is, I'm dealing with them separately, as MIT is private, obviously, but the MIT Haystack Observatory. Mr. Heidemann, would you mind going through the next slide? So for the Westford Museum, this, like I said, I've been working with Mrs. Green on this. There is a sign there already, but I spoke with her, and she believes there's plenty of room for more information. So my preference would be to put it on the building. But if that's not possible, I could also install a signpost anywhere on the property. Could you go to the next slide, please, Mr. Heidemann? My second location, the former Westford Academy Foundation. There are a couple of markers there currently, but no detailed sign describing the history. So my plan here is to install a signpost with the sign on it with information. Could you go to the next slide, Mr. Heidemann? Actually, if you wouldn't mind, could you go to the, I would like to come back to this if you could go to the next slide. The Town Farm Road Building, so I am aware that this one is being sold for to a gentleman who is interested in putting affordable housing there. But based on conversations I've had, my anticipation or what I've heard is that he is pretty interested in the historical integrity of the building and that putting it on, putting a sign on the building itself shouldn't present too much of an issue. Worst case, he can remove it and put it back on. But if it ends up being a problem, then I can put it on a signpost anywhere else on the property. And then, would you mind going back, Mr. Heidemann? Okay, so this is the one that I have a couple of options with, and I just wanted to run through them and then hopefully get your guys' opinions. If you have anything to share, otherwise I'll move forward with my preferred. So my preferred option would be, I was made aware of Boston Road redevelopment that will be taking place over the next couple of years. And I was told that the sidewalk would be implemented on the, if you're heading towards the center of Boston Road, on the right side of the road. So my Eagle Scout advisor and I came up with the idea to put the sign opposite the current McDougall Trailhead, so that people walking up and down the sidewalk could read it, could stop and see, and it wouldn't be an issue. Whereas if I put it somewhere without a sidewalk, cars may be slowing down to read it. My other option, other options are opposite the street on the McDougall Trail itself. There's currently a trailhead sign there, if any of you are unaware. The other side of the McDougall Trail up on Blakesville Road, or my initial plan, but I had gotten some guidance from the town that it was not a great idea to put it down by the fire department, which is also on the edge of Blakesville Road. That's, that's everything as far as locations, if you guys have anything you'd like to say.
Okay, questions or comments? Do you want to talk about Haystack at all? I mean, I realize that's private property, and we don't have any control over that.
Yeah, so my Eagle Scout advisor actually works at MIT Haystack, so I've talked to a couple of people there, and they're really excited about it. If you guys are familiar with the facility, I'm hoping to put it up by the gate that says, that's where they have the sign about pedestrian visitors. I think that would be the ideal place for it, but I'm scheduled to meet with them later in the week, so that's coming along good. And then, actually, we may as well. Mr. Heidemann, the next slide has pictures of a sign example and a pole example. This sign is is one of three that Mr. Christiana put in. And initially, I had been looking at signs on my own. I found metal coated HDU signs. That's why the packet may say that. But I got in touch with Mr. Christiana, and he advised me to use these, which I think is great. And I'm sorry, one thing I realized I forgot to mention is, one of the things I'd like to do with my project is include QR codes that will take people to a to a site in which will have videos of fellows, my scouts and I, explaining the place in more detail, because obviously you can't do these locations justice with simply a sign. You have to, you probably have to go a little more in depth. So I think that these signs are a lot more conducive to doing that.
Okay, thank you. Anita?
Yeah, you know, I think this is a really great idea, and obviously, you've researched a lot and talked to a lot of people to kind of figure out what sort of input you need for to move this project forward. I have a question about, and you might have connected to this group through Linda Green, but before I was on select board, I remember the Historic Commission came before the select board, talking about sort of the look and feel of signs. And I don't know if anyone else on the select board remembers that, but I just wondered if they would have an opinion as well in terms of how these signs would look and whether or not that's something for consideration if you haven't talked to them yet.
I sent them an email, but I'm not sure if it was earlier, so I'm not, I'm not sure if he got back to me yet. I did send him an email, but it may not have been a thing where he's aware of it yet, so.
Okay. But I think, you know, Anita's point, you should connect with them at some point and get their input. Mark? I'll just go down the line, Mark.
Yeah, so Carter, well done. Anita, I do unfortunately remember those discussions, and Carter, I would definitely encourage you to continue to follow through. So, you know, pending the resolution to that, which we do not need to get involved in. And I love the idea of the QR codes, by the way. I think it's absolutely fantastic. And would aid a lot in, you know, people learning about each of these sites that that you're trying to, you're trying to do. And congratulations on being interested in history. It's a bit of a lost art these days, so bring it home strongly.
Thank you.
Scott? Scott, you're, I think you're muted, Scott.
Yes, I am. The quote of 2020, you're on mute. Very exciting project, and you know, thank you for bringing it forward. I I gather you are talking to Mr. Barrett, because my older concern with the Boston roadside is you've got to be done before you turn 18. And, you know, the of the state and, you know, funding and so forth. You can't guarantee it's done in a couple of years. So what if you do, it has to be sort of either provisional there that can be, you know, taken out, replaced, or someplace else. But I would, I would trust Chip Barrett to give you some good guidance there.
Thank you.
And then, Tom?
Just a very exciting project. Looking forward to seeing it. Looking forward to celebrating more history. And well done. Excellent presentation.
Thank you.
All right, so I must confess that I did have a preview of the project because Carter and I spoke over the weekend, so I I knew what was coming, and I, like all of you, am excited about this project. Particularly, as you said, Mark, the QR stuff and the QR codes. So Carter, I think you you have heard from the board. You were excited about your project. We're thoroughly supportive, and so we look forward to seeing its completion. One of the things that we like is, and I'm sure, you know, when you attain your Eagle Scout, we'll see you again, but we always like getting a final report and seeing pictures of the project around town. As we've said before, as this board has said before, there are so many projects here in town and so many things that have happened and amenities that have occurred here in town that are that are the result of the hard work of our Eagle Scouts, and we are very appreciative for all of that work and for all of those projects. So thank you very much, and good luck. And we look forward to seeing you again.
Me too.
All right, good night. Okay, now I'm going to go back to our 7:25 PM item. What a joke. Jeff Stevens, are you out there?
Yes, I am. I was thinking about hitting this button, but I decided not to.
Well, thank you for your patience. We appreciate it. So can you update us basically on, you know, COVID-19 vaccine distribution plans and basically anything COVID-19 that we in the community should know about?
Sure. So obviously, this is a very fluid and changing solution daily at times and even hourly on when vaccine is going to be released. I'm happy to say that a collaboration between Chelmsford, Westford, Tingsborough, Tewksbury, Bill Rickett, and Drakett started vaccinating all our first responders today. We are doing about 700 vaccines, including staff workers. And we did a little over 240 today. It's, it's a fair amount. But this isn't like doing a normal flu shot. Normally, when we do our flu shot, we have several weeks to sometimes months of planning and booking spaces and times, and even the flu vaccine itself is ordered several months in advance. Right now, we are dealing with an ordering time or sometimes a notification time of days. When we got the vaccine for our first responders, we were given about a week's notice. So we were able to stand up a clinic with an extraordinarily large amount of planning through our team, which in which, in large part, because we're hosting it in Chelmsford, the Chelmsford Health Department, and Sue Rosa have done an amazing job in helping us do that. We're going to have the opportunity at some point to do clinics here, but we don't have a date and time on when we're going to get that vaccine. We're looking at phase two, and phase two is looking like it's going to be people 75 plus and people two comorbidities that have two comorbidities. Our only problem is we just don't know when we're going to be able to start it. We're working with emergency management on how we're going to do that. Even though we have plans for clinics, this COVID vaccine is just a little bit different in how it's handled. It's, it's, it's not like we've done our flu clinics where we'll have, doing it by last name, having three to 400 people come in at a time, waiting, and getting vaccinated and basically walking out the door. This process to do this vaccine is, you have to have a schedule, you have to have a time. You get vaccinated, which the vaccination part is no different than any other portion of a vaccine. You wouldn't know the difference between flu or COVID vaccine when you're actually getting vaccinated. But this particular vaccine is requiring a 15 to 30 minute wait time on the other side, which requires socially distanced spacing for everybody that's there. So what our challenge is right now is to figure out exactly what the state is going to be able to give us, determine what our capacity is for vaccinating, making sure we've got a space suitable enough for the social distancing required, and then executing that. To give you an example of what we have done in the past as far as flu vaccine, this past season, we did approximately 1,400 vaccines in five clinics. And that was an extraordinarily large amount for us. That was by a couple hundred more doses than years past. We have, I'm guessing somewhere around 12,000 people in town, they're going to need to be vaccinated. So if you look at what it took to do 1,400 and the amount of work it will take to do 1400 So if you look at what it took to do fourteen hundred and the amount of work it will take to do fourteen thousand, that's a, that's a monumental task. That we're not necessarily afraid of, but it's gonna take time. It's not gonna happen extraordinarily quickly as far as an entire body of people goes. But as we get vaccine, we are going to use a program called Prep Mod that the state has rolled out. It's uh, our first use of it was today. In fact, the first use of it in the state, all over the state was today. It worked very well. It's scheduled very well. It schedules not only your first dose, but your second dose, which was very helpful. And you get your cards and all your paperwork is done for you in that process. What I'm hoping we can do is we're going to need to, if we're going to do a large amount of people in town, we're going to need a space that is going to be very stationary, that's going to be big enough that we can either leave equipment set up or be able to store it on site on a regular basis and not move it around a lot. It's um, I think a lot of towns are gonna struggle with rolling out clinics for all of the individual members of their community. But what I'm hoping we can do is get our seventy-five-plus crowd, which is approximately twelve hundred people. I think Patty ran those numbers for uh, our nurse scale. And our six, and our sixty-five and older crowd is around thirty-six hundred. It's just gonna take some time. We can have the best laid plans, but today we had about fifty people on site that were doing vaccines for two hundred and forty people to fill all the jobs. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be a lot of work, but I think we can do a a fair amount of it. It's uh, it's gonna be slow, but it's gonna be manageable over time.
Okay, um, questions from the board? Mark?
Yeah, so first just comments. So Jeff, thank you so much for, I don't know, when you sleep. Um, with all this that's that's going on, um, it's mind-boggling. Um, so thank you and your entire staff for everything that you're doing. As a, the last part about space, so um, are there funds available to use vacant commercial space to do vaccines that we could um, that would be allowed, that would allow us to lease a space? I'm thinking of, you know, there's several uh, commercial properties right now that unfortunately are uh, vacant. And I'm wondering whether um, the CARES funding that we have or some other funding allows us to go and rent some of that so you could get the space that you needed.
I would be more than happy to look at a space and and the requirements. And then, of course, you would need the equipment of the tables and and chairs for people to sit, which in itself isn't uh, that major of a deal. But um, I'd be all for a commercial space that we could open and close as we needed and leave the equipment there so we save the setup and breakdown time. Uh, I'm certainly interested in looking in that. Uh, we haven't done.
Yeah, and so the only reason I suggested is, you know, you've got some, you've got a decent amount of of vacant space right now that I'm sure landlords, you know, would, as opposed to getting nothing, would wouldn't mind getting something, especially for a cause like this, so um, you know, I'm willing to help any way I can, but maybe it's something to look into.
Certainly is. Uh, most of our plans that we've worked on for years have always revolved around public space and schools that we've used for uh, and and places like the Franco-American Club for our clinics. And this just is a different feel than what we've done with other other vaccines, so that that may be a great option.
Okay.
Uh, Tom?
Uh, just, thank you. Just echo, echo Mark, you know, thanks for for all your work and your team's work, Jeff, and everyone's working really, really hard on this. So for for people who are residents in town, well, I know that we were still some distance from getting the vaccine doses themselves. When, when do you anticipate having this plan sort of flushed out and what, what will this look like to people in town? Sort of any sense of when they might be notified, how they might be notified and sort of what would happen then?
So where we are in phase one currently, there still is congregate care settings which need to be vaccinated and additional healthcare workers in phase one. Phase two is slated for sometime in uh, February, whether that's February first or the the middle of the month, I'm not sure yet. I think it depends on when the state is actually able to get us vaccine and when they, whether they're gonna plan on doing larger clinics or not. So, once we get done with this particular unit of clinics that we're doing right now, uh, we'll start planning on what our next rollout will be. And it will have to, what we're working on is how many volunteers do we have? How many are going to be able to work? And how many people can we actually vaccinate in a certain amount of time? Is it going to be once a week that we are able to do two hundred to three hundred people a day? Uh, is it gonna be more than that? Uh, there still is some contact tracing that work that needs to be done and of course, the rest of the department still has uh, other duties we're doing as well, which still need to be completed. So those are our challenges right now and identifying exactly every last little bit of what we need. We know a lot of it. It's not hard to actually run the clinic. Uh, today, what we did was fantastic and it's very, it's uh, scalable uh, very easily. But having the space and the manpower and the volunteers uh, and the resources is gonna be the biggest challenge to do a larger-scale clinic in uh, for a sustained amount of time.
Okay, thanks. Please, please make sure you let us know what you need.
Will do.
Um, all right, um, Jeff, let me just echo my my thanks and appreciation to you and your entire staff and also thanks. I know that we had uh, some of our uh, our healthcare workers and our nurses today vaccinating our first responders, so uh, thank you to to them as well um, for for their work and for volunteering to do that. Um, I know they did that on top of the jobs that uh, they are already doing here in town, so um, thank you to them. It's very much appreciated. Um, I I have uh, one uh, question uh, from uh, Diane um, Wood, um, who asks, um, do you have any sense of the numbers uh, for the categories? Uh, for example, uh, when we get to phase two, you know, uh, group one, group two, group three, do we have any sense of what those numbers are yet?
So as far as uh, phase two, uh, as far as the people in town, the one number that we're not gonna be able to wrap our heads around at all is uh, the group of people that has two or more comorbidities. Uh, in fact, the state on um, uh, D P H on the state call today indicated that comorbidities will be indicated on the honor system, which was a a little tough to hear because I I think there are a lot of people that are feel they're gonna have two comorbidities, which is going to make that number impossible to calculate, at least at first. So what we're gonna be looking to do is base our clinics off of our capabilities in order of vaccine based off of what we know we can get out. And it's gonna have to be most likely uh, some collaboration with our senior center on our most needed populations and to make sure that people that can actually get there can get there. And with our seventy-five-plus populations, we're certainly going to need some assistance in probably registering these people because it's not gonna be a, you can just show up and get a vaccine type situation. We don't want people in line. We don't think that's a good idea for any age group. Uh, it's been proven that having a uh, a schedule system where we operated off of uh, every fifteen minutes today worked amazingly well. And we're gonna keep with that model because that keeps more people safer and less people out of line and allows people more, more people to schedule their day.
Anita?
Um, I just wanna also echo my thanks. I know you're everywhere all day long. And um, I just have this really basic question and I don't know if this is really naive, but how does this complement? I mean, I assume rollouts are also gonna be in like private practices and hospitals as well. So are you capturing the population that wouldn't be going to their primary care physicians? Is that?
So right now, you know, a lot of the emails and phone calls I'm getting are actually from uh, PCPs and and private uh, care facilities. They don't know when they're getting vaccine right now either, so they're, they're looking to us for some answers there, which becomes challenging for us because we we're still waiting for the answers ourselves on when we're going to get it. So we're not gonna be able to answer that question quite yet. We just, we just don't have it yet.
Okay. All right, so I think um, as um, uh, as I think Tom said, you know, please keep us posted what you need, how we can help you. Um, in addition, as you get more information, um, we will make sure to have you back to the select board meetings so that we can get uh, that information out to the public um, in as many ways as possible. Um, both through meetings, um, our website, uh, Westford Cat, um, and whatever uh, other media uh, outlets we can use. So, thank you very much, Jeff.
Sure thing. Uh, one other thing I would just wanna bring up real quick is as vaccine rolls out, uh, our focus on contact tracing is going to start to fall off. And we're gonna be putting more of a focus on the mitigation portion, which is vaccine. We're still gonna try to make sure that we're uh, reaching out to everybody, but there are certain sets of the population that we are going to most likely need to let to go to contact tracing, the C T C that the state runs, while we're just going to maintain the, most likely the students and the seniors in Westford that will manage here and let the remainder of the population go to the, to the state C T C.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, we're at our next item, which is um, a fiscal year twenty twenty-one uh, financial update. Um, hello, Dan, how are you?
I'm doing well. How are you?
I'm good. So uh, Jody and Dan, which one of you is is going to present? I guess Dan has his hand up, so um, we're going with Dan. Go, go.
All right, can everybody see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, so I'll give you a brief update on how we're tracking so far in F Y twenty-one. Um, we, we did get our tax rate certified by the D R at sixteen sixty-four. Uh, the tax revenue is a tax revenue, no issues with that. Uh, going down to state aid, uh, something happened this year. This never happened before. We had our tax rate certified prior to the state uh, passing their budget. So there were changes after we set our tax rate. Most notably, we got an extra ninety-three thousand in charter school assessment reimbursement, which on the face of it, looks like a good thing. However, they also increased our assessments where they withhold state money by the same amount and also withheld another eighty-nine thousand for the school choice receiving tuition. So all in all, uh, we're starting with a state deficit of about eighty-nine thousand that we have to account for in this fiscal year. Wasn't what we were hoping for, but we, we are tracking that. Uh, moving up to local revenue, uh, this is one of the most volatile um, pieces that we're uh, seeing during the pandemic. Uh, most of the local revenues are within budget here and there. I mean, I, they almost went out to zero with the exception of the hotel and motel excise and the meals excise. We've been tracking this very carefully. Uh, for the hotel and motel excise, um, our, the payment we received on September thirtieth was forty-five percent of the amount received the prior fiscal year. Uh, the payment we just received on December thirtieth was only twenty percent of what we received last fiscal year. So to give you a ballpark of what that is, um, last year during the second quarter, we brought in a hundred and eighty-eight thousand. This year, we brought in thirty-seven thousand. So the hotels are really struggling right now. Their parking lots are empty if you drive by them. Uh, it's not a good sign for them. Uh, the meals uh, tax is actually going in the other way. So the, the first uh, quarter this year, we brought in sixty-two percent of last year. In the second quarter, we brought in seventy-nine percent. So I think the restaurants are adapting to actually uh, get meals out there and bring in some revenues themselves. So that's been a, a jump for us. So overall, I was just doing a quick math. Um, last year, we, we brought in a million seventy-three from these two uh, revenue accounts. We're on track for five hundred and thirty-four thousand this year, so that's a decrease of five hundred and thirty-nine thousand to our local revenue from last year. So as you, you can see, our other accounts are up and down slightly. There's no other major alarms at this point, but we are tracking them and I'll come back and update you again. I'm sure a couple of times throughout the, the rest of the year. Uh, the enterprise revenue, uh, if you remember last time, we had a deficit in the recreation enterprise of four hundred and seventy-five thousand. Uh, in order to actually set the tax rate, the board uh, voted four hundred and seventy-five thousand to uh, basically raise that deficit. So that deficit's gone for now, so it's a factor at this point. And the other enterprise that we're tracking closely is the ambulance enterprise. Um, people aren't taking as many trips to the hospital in the ambulance. They, they don't wanna get in the ambulance for most part if they don't have to. So right now, we're tracking about seven hundred and sixty-two thousand for the year. We have a budget of eight seventy-five. So if you remember what happens with the enterprises, if um, they don't meet their revenue target and they don't have expenses to close out, it will lower their retained earnings to the extent that they have retained earnings available and then they'll impact the general fund. So it's just something to keep an eye on and not too alarmed yet at this point. So that's overall for revenue. We're looking at about a three hundred thousand dollar deficit at this point for the end of the fiscal year. Again, I'm sure things will change, but this is just our, our best estimate at this point. Uh, moving to expenditure side of things for the uh, the town services. I do track uh, the personal services each week and we have a, a running updated projection on what we're estimated to close out year end. Right now, it's about three hundred and sixty-five thousand. Uh, for the town expenses, uh, I mean, they're a lot harder to project. They're less predictable. So at this point, I don't have any notices from department heads that they're committing to uh, close out money at this point, but as we go along, I'm sure people will have a better grasp of that. Of course, ask Jesse to go through and look at uh, old capital projects and prior year encumbrances and come up with some figures. So overall, we're, we're looking at about a four hundred and five thousand dollar closeout from the town at year end at this point. Uh, for the schools, I know Ingrid's giving uh, an update on the budget uh, next Monday night to the school committee, so uh, we're waiting on her to give that uh, to have more information. Uh, Neshoba Tech, of course, it's an assessment. We're gonna pay them all that we have there. Also, that's for seeing to look at debt service and see if there's any potential closeouts. And we do have one band due and uh, bond anticipation note due in June for roadwork. Uh, we think we might close out about twenty-five thousand there. Uh, for health insurance, we're looking at like a hundred and thirty-eight thousand or so as a closeout. Again, that's a volatile account. Um, but we did reduce this budget at the special town meeting to help balance the budget. And then the other risk management is uh, the, the Medicare and the other insurances and workers' comp. Uh, I have a projection here about a forty-two thousand dollar uh, uh, deficit, which isn't a problem because the health insurance will help offset it, but we have not uh, received the workers' comp audit yet, so that will uh, basically drive that figure moving forward. So that's my, my four-minute update on F Y twenty-one.
Jody? Yeah, so we wanna return on one twenty-six after we have an update from the schools on where they're at, but we wanted to at least let you know uh, where we're projecting right now and and firm that up for the twenty-six. Great, thank you. Um, yeah, Mark?
Yeah, so just a shout out, Jody, to you and Dan and and everybody else. Um, you know, the ability for us to even have a conversation that looks like this right now is quite amazing. And I know it's not the first time we've had it, but um, you guys are doing a great job in keeping the taxpayer whole during a time that uh, that's not easy. So thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, uh, Anita, sorry.
Does um, does Ingrid's education, like school budget update include Neshoba Tech too?
That does, I know.
No, but since you brought it up, I actually have heard from Denise Pigeon at's latest today. And Dan and I will be meeting with her shortly to try to understand. I think Westford enrollment has gone up at Neshoba. And um, but she did tell me the, their budget meeting will be February fifth at uh, ten A M, which all of you are invited to. It will be virtual this year. Uh, but Dan and I will be able to get some better figures um, before that, so. Great. Uh, thank you both. Um, as Mark said, we really, we know how hard you're working um, uh, uh, around budget issues on top of everything else. And um, so thank, and keeping this town fiscally sound. So thank you both very much, um, and also to your staff. Um, okay, um, update on the status of CARES Act funds and its extension through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Um, is that you, Jody, or Dan? I guess it's Dan.
Okay, so this is complete draft right now. We're not done auditing or anything like that, but I just wanted to report back to the board on where we're at. Um, basically, the CARES Act gave us two million hundred forty-two thousand uh to spend by December thirtieth. Um, in the first round, the first two rounds, we spent um uh two hundred and thirty-five thousand. It was slow coming. We were ordering PPE, getting organized, putting out bids and all those things. Um, and this, I have to say, this is one of the most frustrating uh grants I've ever worked with. They've changed the rules all the time as we move along. So basically, the CARES Act thought that um a lot of items would be FEMA eligible, which almost nothing was FEMA eligible except for the fire overtime and any PPEs by first responders. So in the third round, they let us do what's called the FEMA true-up, where anything that wasn't reimbursed by FEMA, we were able to put into the CARES Act. So that lowered the balance a bit. Um, the un-audited round three request to date, this is a work in process, uh, work in progress, I should say. Um, I'm actually meeting with Ingrid tomorrow. Let's go over and see if we have any outstanding invoices that were not captured uh on the schools. Um, we also just got word of the final for the uh incremental special education transportation, which is a hundred and forty-three thousand. But because the students had to be spaced on the vans, we required more vans, so we were able to submit those to the CARES Act. Uh, the estimated fire ambulance OT, again, we're still auditing this, but this is our our best guess at this point. It's actually a pretty accurate guess. We just have to go and tie everything through. But this is reimbursed seventy-five percent by FEMA, so this is just the uh the CARES Act share. Uh, again, with materials, this is just a CARES Act share. FEMA reimburses the other uh seventy-five percent. And then the police figure we're still working on, working on uh with the office manager, Marcy, uh, with the police department. So this is going to be a lot less than the share that the uh the fire usually puts in for for the OT, so it shouldn't be that substantial. And then just any other outstanding invoices that we find as we're going through this will detract from the uh leftover balance here. So at this point, we have about four hundred and thirty-seven thousand. I know this will change. We'll we'll give another update on where we are. At some point in the near future, but basically, we had nine months to spend two-point-one million. And now they they're allowing us another twelve months to spend four hundred thousand. So now supplies are in short demand. Um, I I know we have some critical things we have to take care of, but we'll think our plan is to get together and figure out which are the the biggest needs and allocate the monies based on those.
Okay. Any any comments or questions? Okay, well, again, thank you both. Um, and just, you know, keep us updated. Um, okay, um, we um are moving to old and new business. Um, we have already uh heard from Carter. So we have a request to approve an alcohol beverages control commission retail liquor license renewal application to report licensees who failed to renew for twenty twenty-one. Um, is is this Patty?
Well, it can be. Um, I think I'm pretty sure this is the form that just needs to be signed. And as long as your licensees failed to renew. So we had a couple this year who did not. That would be um the British Beer Company, uh, the famous craft beer exchange, and there's somebody else in there that I'm not remembering.
Big Bite.
Big Bite, yes, that's right.
Okay.
Here I am.
Okay. Hi, Patty, there you are. Okay, so we we just have to sign a form? Is that is that what you're saying? So, okay, do we need to vote on anything?
I don't believe so. It's just to let you know that we always, we never have people um not renew in the twenty-plus years I've been doing this. So this is the first time I can remember in a long time that someone failed to renew.
Andrea?
Yep.
Andrea, the board is certifying the premises that uh failed to renew. So you should take a vote.
Okay, is there a vote to so certify? I mean, is there a motion to so certify?
So moved.
Second, okay, um, all of those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Um, okay, we have a request from the Ad Commission to appoint Darren T. Sidoo as a full member for a term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Um, all those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, thank you.
Board reports enough? Sorry, um, board reports and updates. Do we have any? All right, moving right along. Um, minutes for approval. We have uh uh minutes for our regular sessions of October twenty-seventh, November tenth, November twenty-fourth, and December eighth of twenty twenty. Is there a motion to approve and release?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Um, okay, um, all those in favor, Anita?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. Um, then we have an executive session of March twenty-six, twenty twenty, not for release. Is there a motion to approve but not release?
It's uh May twenty-sixth.
May twenty-sixth. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. With that, Mr. Clerk, will you make a motion to approve and not uh and not release?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, Anita?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Aye.
Um.
Aye.
And last but not least, from from the past, um, we we have uh we have executive session minutes from May thirteenth, twenty fourteen, and June third, twenty fourteen. Um, is there a motion to approve and release?
Sure, yes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I got to tell you, reading these brought back memories.
Nightmares.
Yeah, not such good ones. All those in favor, um, Anita?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Jody, we're at Town Managers Report.
Yes, so to start off uh for the appointment process for the new police chief, I am requesting that the board approve the appointment of Mark Chambers as provisional police chief effective January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one.
So moved.
Second, second.
Okay, um, all those in favor, um, Scott?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then I wanted to know if any select select board members would like to participate in the promotional process for Westford's new police chief.
Ah, three people would. Oh, no, no.
Just a question.
Mark has a question, and then we'll get to Anita and Scott, okay?
No, but thank you. I'm not interested. But um I just, if you could, Jody, just explain what the process is, I think would be helpful.
Okay, um, so this is a civil service department, and it has been since nineteen thirty-eight. And so basically, it's a process that we go through when there is an opening. And in Westford has always kept that internal. And so it actually provides promotional opportunities for the officers, you know, within the department. Uh, so it starts off with us. I have the next item will be um asking, well, actually, let me back up. It starts off with a delegation agreement with the Human Resources Division, which I have already entered. That's the first step. Then we can hire an assessment center uh company, and that is I have an RFP to go out and um hire a company. They run assessments with several um former chiefs or existing chiefs that uh that review each person's um kind of actions and answers to their questions. And there's points assigned for education, military service, years in positions and so on. There are tests done. Once it's all um done, then we have interviews that would be scheduled with a panel. Uh, when we did the deputy police chief, I think I had one select board member and several other people participating. Uh, that's about twenty-five percent of the total scores for the for the promotional process. And um so once all that is done, there's a total score from the HRD, the Human Resource Division with the assessment, and then we add our score in from the interview process. And um there's generally one one person that um receives the top score. If you don't go with that person, then you need to justify why. That can be appealed to the Civil Service Board. And um and uh if it's not appealed or you choose the top person, then um the top, you know, uh numbered test scores, everything it added, uh then you move forward at a point. So I didn't do a great job of that. I'm sorry. I didn't expect that question, and I didn't have notes, so I hope that was okay.
It and it's basically the process we followed when um when we went to hiring a deputy chief, right?
Right, yep. And um in terms of if, uh, well, I don't want to get into that. That okay, that's my explanation, so.
Okay, so um now, um, uh, a member of our board who would like to participate. Looks like Scott and Anita, you both are interested. Um, so he- here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to leave it to the two of you to talk and figure it out. And whomever you decide to let Jody know.
So both of them can participate, that's fine. Three of you cannot, but two of, if two are interested, they certainly can. Um, I've also asked the uh fire chief to participate with us too. And um Director of Land Use, uh, I wish I had my notes on this, but a couple of key department heads that work very much with the police department, I've asked to participate. Uh, I'm happy to have two select board members too.
Well, I think then that's the easy solution, is that since both uh Anita and Scott want to participate, go for it. And Scott, did you have a comment?
What is it? Just I know that, you know, there's um, you know, sort of, I think, sort of, public safety, public safety, public safety. That's kind of my, you know, sort of passion on the board, so one reason I wanted to do it, and it was it was part of the deputy chief uh process as well. But, you know, I think that, you know, Anita's role with the DEI Committee is also critical. So I thought that the two of us actually were a a natural team for this.
Makes sense. Okay.
Anita's got her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Anita, you you have to, like, you got to bust your
Big hand.
I just, I need bigger hands or something. I actually had some of the comment that I wanted to say um earlier. And that was just that for folks who are listening, who are really curious about the process, I found reading the RFP to be extremely informative. So you should take a look at that if you haven't already. It it lays out the process pretty clearly. And um also, I know that Scott's really hard to work with, but I think I could maybe try and duke it out and figure out how to work with him on this interview panel, you know? But um I'd love to be part of that process with Scott.
Great. I think the two of you will make a great team.
I did hear from a resident who expressed interest in participating, and um I I'm happy to include a resident. I certainly can try to get the word out that um I my, actually, my newsletter goes out tomorrow. I could put it in that and it certainly include a resident if they're interested.
You know, I think um, you know, I think opening it up to a resident uh and putting a resident on on the on the review committee, you know, I think makes sense. Um, you know, I think, you know, let's uh get the word out and uh so that anybody who wants to apply uh can do so. Um, Jody, do you have in mind sort of a a timeframe and a timeline? I mean, I don't, you know, want to I I don't want this going on forever, okay?
Anita, that's not doing it. You got to get in.
I saw Anita. I just needed to finish my sentence, but you know, um. Um, I I just don't know. I mean, I think if we're going to open it up, we should have a deadline by which residents should uh get their applications in. Anita?
Yeah, I had a question of how we, what the selection process then would be for for picking that resident.
Um, I I think that probably that it would be, you know, people submit their citizen, you know, their application forms, just like they do for um you know, other committees, and it comes before us, and we get to make the selection.
Okay. Okay, so I'm happy to do that, and I will bring uh anyone interested to your next meeting because the RFP is actually due to the town on February twelfth. So it would be great timing to have the deadline, um, probably the uh, I'll get the date, but the Thursday prior to your um meeting, your next meeting on February twelfth, I believe it is. Right, yeah, okay. Okay, so the next, thank you. The next step is I did include the draft RFP that we developed to hire an assessment center firm, and I want to release this tomorrow. Uh, but I wanted to give you all an opportunity to take a look at it and see if you had any suggestions before we release it.
I think you did a great job.
Thank you. I ended up getting sciatica writing this, but I'm over it, so, okay, so thank you. Uh, we'll get that released. So the next order of business is I'm requesting you accept a gift donation of twenty-five hundred by the Lowell Fiscent Savings Bank to help our diversity, equity, and inclusion uh work in the town.
Is there, um, Mark?
Yeah, so can you share with me, Jody, like, who's deciding how it gets dispersed into into whom? Uh, either with this fund or as others might come in? Like, who's doing that?
Well, um, I mean, that's certainly up to all of you. We would put it in a gift account. And the and if you want, the diver, I assume the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee would make recommendations on how to spend it. But if you want them to report back to the select board with their recommendation, we can. Uh, that's up to the board.
Yeah, so it my only comment is I'm not worried about twenty-five hundred dollars, but if this kind of um gift fund kind of continues to to grow uh becomes a little bit more uh substantial, I think we should have some sort of policy um about that. I don't have a problem with the DEI Committee making recommendation, but um you know, I I think it would behoove us to have a little bit of a process on this.
Okay, so just if we get more money, not with this.
We can start now. That that's fine. I mean, we can start now too.
Yeah, I mean, I think, Mark, I think it makes sense to have some sort of process. I think for now, we can just uh, you know, put it in the, you know, open a gift account. Um, and let it sit there right now while we develop a process for how these funds and any other funds that we might get for that account can be distributed. Uh, Anita?
Yeah, the DEI Committee is actually meeting tomorrow night, and if, and I don't know if there, that that's really enough time. But if we have examples to of other policies for other accounts to just kind of take a look at, to familiarize ourselves with, I think that would be really helpful. It doesn't have to be tomorrow, but you know, just let you know.
Scott?
My 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 thought was that, you know, the the DI Committee reporting to us at at some point, I think, end of February, I think, is the new, the new day.
Actually, they're going, they're supposed to report to us at the end of January, their next meeting.
Our next meeting.
You know, that they'll 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 have developed some priorities already. There'll be some costs perhaps to those priorities. So, you know, I think as part of their report, they could say, you know, here's the near-term concern, can we spend the money for that right now? And or or here is this, we want to, you know, bank it and save for the future. But I think, let them make But I think, let them make a recognition to us, you know, as part of their report, what they need and how they, you know, rank priorities.
That makes sense.
Tom?
Just making sure you see the comment in the questions from Eric Barbarminga.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, Eric basically says, I certainly agree that there should be a process to guide us. And so, as I said, I think it makes, and as Mark said, I think it makes sense to come up with a process and, and procedures. You know, for now, we can put the money in an account where it can sit. And meanwhile, also, Anita, as you said, you know, I think, you know, asking the, the DEI committee for, you know, it's, any recommendations it might have, any need for funding or funds that they might need right now, based on the work that they're intending to start to do, you know, to, to come back and let us know. Okay?
Okay, so did you vote to accept?
No, we did not, so can I?
I'm going to accept the grant and put it into a gift account for the DEI committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Mark? Anita?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so next, I'm asking you to accept a gift of an autographed New England helmet from Iverson Guo, I can't pronounce his last name, owner of Karma, with intent to donate to a future town-affiliated nonprofit fundraiser. So Iverson presented this to me as a thanks to the town for all their support through, I believe, 15 years they've been in business. It is sitting in the town manager's office. Obviously, I'd like the town to accept this gift and then we can discuss what we'd like to donate it to in the future or donate the proceeds to.
Do you wear it during the day?
I have not put it on.
I'll, I'll make the motion to accept this gift.
Is there a second? All those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Mark? Anita?
Aye.
Aye.
And thank you to Iverson for donating it.
Okay, so then next, I just wanted to announce, and I know Dan did do a memo in your packet, and I actually included the, the audit in your packet in case people were interested. But we had an outstanding audit that was completed recently. And I wanted to be sure the town knows we're audited annually and no management letter. Everything's in good order. So if you're more interested to dig in, please do so. Okay, and then contracts. I have a request to improve, to approve the intermunicipal agreement with the towns of Acton, Boxborough, Littleton, and Maynard to award monetary grants to businesses impacted by COVID, local enterprise businesses, and also Public Services Assistance Program. So that's very exciting. That'll allow us to start releasing funds. Also, the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the fiscal year 2021, 911 grant, an amount of $18,658. Waterline Industries for netting road water treatment plant filter replacement, $613,177. Woodard and Curran for SCADA system improvements at different tanks in town, an amount of $26,216. Tie-in bond for engineering services at Westford Academy Treatment Plant, $18,300. New England Disposal Technologies for Drinking Water Residuals Removal and Disposal at $10,048. Acton Teamwork LLC for the lease of the boys camp at East Boston Camps within Stony Brook Conservation at $35,000. And then purchase orders, Allstate Birm for view irrigation, new quality fence, shortcut landscaping for snow removal for the winter season, the amount of $67,500. Mayor Services for Cleaning and Redevelopment of the Fletcher Well, about $13,175. And Process Distributors for 4,800 pounds of constant chlor plus dry chlorinate or brickheads in the amount of $11,952.
Anybody have any questions about any of those?
Or should
Is there a second? All those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to waive reading respondents?
Is there a second? All right, everybody raise, I don't, everybody raise their hands who are in favor of, okay. All right. Is there a second?
Go clerk, second.
All those in favor? Thank you all very much. Thank you for your patience. Everybody, stay safe, have a good night, and take care.
Everybody.